In order, start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now I have is the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is approval of minutes of 1:15, 2020.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of January 15, 2020.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now I have is approval of claims for payment of 1:22, 2020.
Make a motion to approve the January 22 of 2020 claims for payment.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Utility permits, I didn't have any. Anything with secondary roads?
We lost four machines last week and got three of them back on the road, so one of those days. You know, winter's hard on our equipment. So, one of them is one of our new motor graders, so we've contacted the people we bought it from and working through some stuff. Hopefully that's back soon. I don't know. Yeah, it's not fun, but we gotta deal with it.
All right.
Now I have is set time and date for fiscal year 2020 and 2021 budget hearing, and it looks like we are looking at going over our 2% cap, so we have to do a max levy.
Resolution.
Resolution.
I'd make a motion to set the time and date for the public hearing for February 12, 2020, at 9:02 a.m. in the large conference room of the Hardin County courthouse.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have is construction evaluation resolution. This is our matrix.
I'd make a motion to approve the construction evaluation resolution.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Lance, a few weeks ago, Nick Shute asked me, as we looked at the construction evaluation resolution, you know, how do constituents know that we are actively lobbying our representatives to, you know, make changes to the master matrix? And so, he and I had a great conversation and even had a few laughs, and so it was kind of interesting. But last week, I was at the Capitol and I was able to sit down with Senator Amanda Reagan, Democrat representing Franklin, Saragordo, Floyd, in parts of Butler County, Matt Winchettall from Harrison County, Waylon Brown that represents Mitchell and Floyd County, and Carrie Colker that represents Dubuque and Jackson County. And I asked, you know, are we going to see any action to revise the master matrix resolution? And the consensus was that there wasn't going to be any action on it. And this was, you know, three or, you know, four representatives of the people, and when others asked why not, and including myself, it was because their, the outside influence would make it very difficult to find any compromise. And that was kind of the consensus, and so at this time, it's not going to be looked at. So, out of respect for Nick's request, you know, to come back and report, I think it's important that we do report what we, you know, lobby our representatives for, but I think the construction evaluation resolution is the best we can do with the little amount of local control that we do have. So.
Anything else?
Do you want to call in Julie?
Julie?
I just had a question.
Wait, please can come up if you're gonna ask. Julie, please, please come up if you're gonna ask. Julie.
Do you have Sweeney or Deo? And what exactly?
Julie, please come up.
Are the outside influence, did you call, did you talk to our representatives?
I didn't.
Dio and Sweeney, and what they're doing to move something like that forward, a change? And what are the, what are the inside forces that are preventing it? Can you name them? Or the outside forces that are preventing?
Well, they weren't named, I'll, I'll be happy to name them.
Yeah, tell us, please, thank you.
I think Iowa pork producers, Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement, the Sierra Club, Food and Water Watch, Iowa Pork Producers, so there's several outside influences.
And, yes, that's true. And some of them actually want clean water and, uh, clean air, others don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's all I had, Lance.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee. Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have is the resolution on policy for Chapter 459, public comment and public This is something that was constructed, I believe, a year ago, if not two years ago. Darrell put it together. And these are some policies that I'd like to put in place as we go along with the construction permits.
I will make a motion, excuse me, to approve the resolution on policy for Chapter 459, public comment and public hearing.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Julie, you want to come up?
You bet I do. Donna Juwer cannot be here today, but she asked me to read this. Oh, I do have a question. Does, it just talks about written comment. Will that be excluding verbal comment?
The public hearing will be verbal comments.
Okay.
Anything that goes to the DNR would be a written comment.
Right, okay, good, at least we get that straight. Okay, Donna asked me to read this concerning this resolution. The page in blueprint only mentions written comments, so we can presume that it doesn't completely pertain to verbal comments as well, or whether or not it also applies to the verbal comments of the applicant. We don't go into the pertinence, since what is pertinent depends on your point of view. So let's look at attachment A. County comments relate to compliance with the legal requirements for construction of the confinement operation. For this reason, the public comment is likewise limited. Where in Chapter 459 does it say this? The code states, and I quote, "The board shall provide for comment as follows, et cetera, et cetera, F procedures for providing public comments to the board as provided by the board," unquote. That's procedure, no subject matter. Quote, "The county board of supervisors may submit comments by the board and the public to the department as provided in this section, including but not limited to all of the following," unquote. Here it lists the four items you have included in attachment A, except you added non-compliance with the matrix. Included but not limited to, it doesn't mention legal reasons, it doesn't mention that you're not allowed to talk about this or that. Of course, if it did, that might fly in the face of the Constitution of the State of Iowa, Article I, Bill of Rights, Section 1. All people are by nature free and equal and have certain inalienable rights, among which are those of enjoying and defending life and liberty, acquiring, possessing, and protecting property, and pursuing and obtaining safety and happiness. Also, Section 7, every person may speak, write, and publish his comments on all subjects, being responsible for the abuse of that right. No law shall be passed to restrain or abridge the liberty of speech or of the press. I was told to ask you what makes you think you have the authority to change state law? Also, what sanctions could a simple resolution possibly bring? Resolutions cannot change state law or the Constitution of Iowa. It is only a non-binding opinion, like something you make on New Year's Eve, or declaring, for example, Hot Dog Day, or Tootsie Roll Day. That's Donna's statement. Are you saying in this that the public comment is limited to these five things here, but will comments be, be limited and not be able to speak? Loss of property, odor, dust, traffic, noise, will those be addressed? Can people still speak on those, or is it going to be limited to these five things?
Are you, are you talking sent to the DNR, or are you talking in the public hearing?
I'm talking in the public hearing.
You can, it's a public hearing, you can speak.
Very good. That's our win.
Thank you.
Darrell, did you want to comment on any of these?
Some counties actually don't even have a public hearing. It said, the code says they may hold a public hearing. Some counties like Tama County just accept written comments, and then that becomes part of the file and is sent down to the DNR with whatever the board would recommend to approve or deny an application. The idea with this policy gives people both the right to attend a public hearing and say whatever they want for or against an application. The written comment part is really, take it as a guide. If you want to best articulate and advance your objection to something, this is a guide to help you express it in a way that's probably going to get the most attention at the, at the Iowa DNR level. So, it's not to deny or squelch anybody's objections or opinions, it's to help maybe serve as a guideline. If you have something to say and you want the DNR to take note of what you're saying, do it in written, writing, and try to follow the guideline here on attachment A that will help you express it in a way that will get their attention. If you, if you talk about things that currently they don't really pay attention to, your comments are going to be for naught. So, it's really to help you, everybody, for or against an application. So, I encourage the board to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Julie, come up.
Anyone who's had some dealings with the DNR in Des Moines and officials in Des Moines concerning CAFOs and hog factories kind of knows that once that thing goes and ends up on a desk in the DNR with approval from a county board supervisors, you're lucky if they open it. I know, of course, they will, but your comments are maybe not even read. So, I, no. This is going to be a political issue for some time, apparently, but the DNR is not looking at your stuff and they don't care because we know how that goes. And so, and you did, Mr. Meyer, type up a thing with your opinion on lawsuits and perhaps appeals. And so, we kind of know through your word, the use of the word frivolous, I'm not sure how many times you've put the word frivolous when it comes to people pursuing clean water. So, that also shadows, puts a shadow on sometimes the opinion that we get. So, there's that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing no other comments? I'll call for the vote. Roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is the ISAC Wellness Program Agreement. Lynn's been working with this. Did you want to come up and talk about it at all, or?
I think you, last week, named our wellness committee, and so this is an attempt, we've tried a lot of different wellness programs for the years, and some have been somewhat successful, some have been not successful. We kind of have not really had a wellness program for the last year or so, or two. So, the committee is recommending to the board that you approve an agreement with the Iowa State Association of Counties, with ISAC. They have a program available that's been in place for several years. I know some people, Taylor's been on the committee and his, he's worked for a county that did, did have a wellness committee through ISAC, and it's basically offered to the counties that provide health insurance for, so I think that's 25 or 30 counties at least. They've opened it up now so that counties that don't use their insurance can participate in their wellness. So, this is a program of, combined with incentives, so the hope is that by some small incentives, will help people participate and then do things become, so that they become healthier, which in the long term, hopefully, will save our plan some money through either, you know, lifestyle changes, or it could be just because they catch something by going, you know, to the doctor, because one of the ways they earn incentives is they need to go for their wellness physical, and then that information gets related to the, there's a web portal, and then that information will be in there, and that'll include like blood work and things like that, which, so hopefully, they might catch something there if, if there would be a problem. And then there's, they can earn incentives for, there's eight different pillar areas of wellness, and the committee will be helping work on that to come up with ideas through the year where we can offer things to the employees, or some things they can just do on their own off of that list of pillars, and then they can earn incentives there for up to four of those areas. So, the maximum incentive for anybody would be $150. We're only including employees, and they have to be on our health insurance.
Employees of anybody on our health insurance, not just the county.
Right.
Anybody on the plan.
If they want to participate, so, yeah.
And then it's also a $6 a month for anybody that participates?
For, for people who, and we, we've got a, Lori's going to be sending out, if you guys approve this, we kind of put a flyer together, and we'll be, Lori will be sending that out, and then we'll collect names and email addresses for those that want to participate. We don't want to have to pay the $6 for people who right up front say, "I'm never going to participate in wellness." But if they're willing, then we would submit those names, and then the $6 would apply to the people who are actually participating in the program.
What would happen if somebody signs up and then never participates, and then we pay $6 a month throughout the year for that person?
Well, in the past, we've paid for everybody that's on our plan.
Right.
So we had a lot of dead weight on those, but on this one, we could end up with a few people who upfront say, "Yeah," but then they don't, but I don't, I think we'll make it clear to the department heads that they need to make sure upfront that people are willing to participate.
And they can be removed anytime we need, right?
I think they can, yeah. I mean, I, probably each month, we can look at that list, and if somebody totally isn't participating, we can, I'll have them removed.
You could have people as the, if you got employees later in the year?
I think so, yeah. I mean.
Because, I mean, it'd be the same as if you had a new hire.
That's what you're talking, a new hire.
And I, and I look at it as, you know, let's at least try it a year and see how it goes, and, and, you know, if it doesn't work, it's another one that doesn't. But I, I feel like the incentives may help some people for the small amount of money we're talking about for incentives. And the incentive would be paid out once a year, probably in either late November, early December. It'll have to go through payroll, so there will be FICA taken out, but not IFRS. But it's kind of like a little bonus they could get before Christmas for, for doing things to become better and more well, and then maybe it's a little Christmas bonus they get, you know?
And the money that they're paid for their accomplishments comes out of the insurance fund.
Right, yeah, it's not, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
I'd make a motion to approve the ISAC Wellness Program Agreement as presented.
All right. I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Again, I just thank the committee for, you know, collaborating to, you know, get something that really appears like it could actually work and has some realistic goals and objectives, so thank you.
And hopefully has an effect on the, the health of the employees, and maybe won't, we won't have the increases in our premiums as much as we have sometimes in the past.
I am all for the wellness program. I kind of lean on the fence that I don't like rewarding people for participating in something that I wish they would do anyway. But I, I do agree with what Lynn said. We've been doing it for all these years with minimal participation. Maybe we can get higher participation involved by doing this. It's, it's something better than we've been doing.
Right, it's worth trying.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is the ISAC Business Associate Agreement.
I'd make a motion to approve the ISAC Business Associate Agreement as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? We covered that with Lynn when we talked about both. I don't have any other discussion. Hearing no more, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is accept a recommendation of FIA Advisory Board and organizational structure. And Angela, would you like to come up and talk about it?
Oh, that's for the, that's for Friendship Club.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jerry is the president of our advisory board, so he offered to come today, so if you want to.
Jerry, I'm sorry.
Well, I certainly can, Lynn, but you are much more engaged in the finances of it. So I can go up. I look at it, so I can say.
You do, you look great.
Well, he did catch me off guard. So, the Faith in Action is the Assistant Board for the Friendship Club. And you're familiar with the Friendship Club. We serve a very important part of individuals in our county. And it is our understanding that the state is going to change their rules in the funding, which will not allow the county to be involved. I see a couple of you nodding your heads, so that's true. And the options that were presented at our last board meeting led us to conclude that the only viable option is a 501(c)(3). We voted to pursue that with the approval of the supervisors and the assistance of the county attorney, who is going to help with the bylaws and everything else involved in setting up a 501(c)(3). So, those are the comments. Lynn, did you have anything to add to them?
Yeah.
I would stress that it, since my involvement, I've come to appreciate what the Friendship Club does for that segment of the population. And for that organization to cease to exist will create havoc and leave a real hole for those individuals. So we hope that this is the right path to follow, but the board is committed to it. If it works, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
I'd make a motion to accept the recommendation of the FIA Advisory Board for organizational structure as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
And I'd agree with Jerry. We have probably the strongest, and I'm, I think it's the oldest drop-in center program in our region and most well-attended, so this meets a strong need in the community. And, you know, being out and about when you have actual clients and family members come up and, you know, let you know how valuable the service is, it, yeah, it would create a huge gap in lifestyle, so, yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is a change of status in our VM department.
Make a motion to, oh, you want, go ahead.
I thought you guys would want to sing his praises. So, Luke has taken on a lot more responsibility lately since Megan's left. He's also been learning how to drive snowplows, and so he's, he's been helping in our operations as well, which I know before Megan wasn't sure what he was going to do in the winter, so, you know, I think Luke has definitely earned this. He's a great employee. Yeah, I mean, sing his praises.
Good.
Thank you, Taylor.
Glad to hear it. So I will make a motion to approve the change of status for Luke Davison. It's a pay increase to $18.78 an hour, and it's effective January 18.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is a change of status, secondary roads.
So we had about 30 applicants for opening. We interviewed all the ones with experience. You know, this kind of a specialty job where we're hoping we could find somebody that's actually run an excavator before. So, we interviewed all them. Travis was our favorite candidate. I don't know if you guys remember him, but he used to be deputy here, so he's familiar with the county as well, so he's my recommendation.
I'd make a motion to approve the change of status. It's a hiring of Travis Prohaska as a heavy equipment operator at the rate of 21.39 an hour, effective January 22, 2020. One other condition is a 25 cent per hour raise after a six-month probationary period.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is public comments.
Okay, I was wondering if there was any further movement on the accident at the bridge, and I'm sorry that you, Sheriff, I did not mean that I think that you were covering up anything. What it comes down to is complexity of law at the state level, which prevents you and the county attorney apparently from coming up with something because things are complicated and, I don't know. You tell me. But, and, and as Jerry said, again, state law is changing, making things different. Things are always becoming more complex, more unsolvable. BJ talked to representatives who don't want to apparently have a debate on the hog factory issue because they don't feel they can come to a compromise because of so many outside people involved, so kind of says that they're not willing to put those voices aside and discuss it, which is unfortunate.
It is. I think we can, we agree to agree on that.
Yes, but, you know what? Things get a little complex, that things can cease to function, and so that is unfortunate. And so I think something needs to be done about that so that the sheriff isn't stymied in his job, or other things, or the issues of roadside management, and there's just all kinds of things. I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Any other public comments? Jessica?
I put something out on Facebook yesterday, and I just thought, since the papers here, I'd throw this out there too, if they had more room, they could throw it in, but if you want a caucus on February 3, it has nothing to do with the auditor's office, but I do want to remind people that, or let them know, the parties conduct the caucuses and set up the locations and run that whole show. And in order to do that, they had to retrieve information from the state about who was registered with each party in advance of that. They both have already polled their party participants, so if you are registered, no party, or intend to change party and go caucus that evening, you will need to go a little bit early and do that onsite at the caucus, because any changes that... changes that occur in our office at this time going forward will not be reflected in the lists that have already been distributed. So, just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
And if you see my Facebook page on that, or the post, share it, please. It might cut down a lot of phone calls.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Any other business? Hearing none, I can ask for adjournment or recess, whichever you so choose.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, do adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.[1798.58]